This is the November ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting of Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Dale Wong. I'm the Chair of the Commission. I'd like to remind everyone present to please silence their phones and electronics during the meeting. We will go ahead and have members introduce themselves, starting with Council Liaison.
Mike Lester, City Council Liaison.
Randy Hosleton, Alternate.
Tricky Young.
Jacob Robinett.
Danny Craig, Vice Chair.
Anne Stropman, City Staff.
Shannon Hoff.
Buddy Tricky Cotton.
Emily Fratwell.
Sarah Michael.
Courtney Bliss, City Planner.
Eric Barron, Planning Manager.
John McCall, Associate Assistant City Attorney.
The City Code authorizes nine regular members and three alternates, designated to vote upon absentee qualification of regular members. A quorum of five members or alternates is necessary to conduct business. I declare the quorum is present. The following regular members are absent this evening: Tom Mordhaus, Hank Vogt. So everyone that is here present will be voting. If Hank shows up, then Sarah, you'll be voting.
Got it. You're at it.
Is someone in attendance to present? Obviously. Text amendments.
Yes, the text amendment item on the agenda will be presented by me.
Twenty-nine hundred block of Route CC. Are there any requests? Are there any requests for continuance?
Yeah.
Are there any requests to reorder the agenda? Courtney, will you please read the format of the hearing and/or of the testimony?
Chair, I'd like to briefly describe the proceedings first. You will need option or complete prepared reports from speaking and give your name and address for the record. The standard order of each case is as follows. After introduction of the request by city staff, the applicant or their consultant will provide information on their request. The only permission by the applicant shall be limited to ten minutes, but additional time is granted by the commission. The applicant should have an additional three minutes to view the testimony requested. We will then ask to hear from supporters of the request. We will then ask to hear from opponents of the request. We will then ask to hear from anyone else who wishes to speak on requests. The time limit shall be limited to three minutes, each unless additional time is granted by the commission. A final vote will be taken. City staff will then give the recommendations on the request. In order to reduce the time necessary to hear an application, the listed printed materials, including applicable findings and staff reports, shall not be run through the register unless directed by the commission. The commission will close testimony from the floor. The commission will then discuss the proposal and publicly make its determination with reasons. A final vote will be taken unless a bias in favor is opposed. Here are some of the results of the votes specifying the number of votes cast in favor and the number of votes against. Quality documents are included as exhibits for all items under consideration at this meeting. The City Code of City of Jefferson has amended the comprehensive plan and land use map, copies of petitions, copies of applications under consideration, a list of property owners to whom notices were sent, the avid avid publications of public books and newspapers, copies of drawings, plans, and drawings under consideration, letters from member and staff, staff reports, missing proceedings, correspondence of other materials submitted by the public or the applicant, rules of procedure for the Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. These items are public record and available for inspection through the Department of Planning and Protective Services or through the Office of the City Clerk. You can be advised that any items that were later distributed or otherwise received pertaining to the case under consideration become the property of the commission. This includes any photographs, drawings, petitions, and letters. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. I just want to notify that Hank Vogt has shown up, so... Sorry, I mean, I'm not really trying to...
Just call him out. He doesn't get to vote.
Hank, you'll now vote, and Sarah, you'll be... He gets such power. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed? Who's at first?
Doesn't matter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the regular minutes of September twenty-first, twenty-four?
May I approve the minutes of September?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Without receiving any communication.
Correct. No communications received for any items.
All right, Eric, you're here. You can complete the study.
Yep. Thank you. And so, first item of business, new business, text amendment. And so it's a package of three different amendments, now presenting to you. These, all three of these were discussed with you last, at the last meeting, when we met across the hall in the Boom Bancroft Room. And so we have noticed them up for formal public hearing for this evening, as was kind of discussed at that meeting. So as shown up on the screen, the first one is dealing with drive-through lane, specific use standards. So those are zoning code standards that, that drive-through lane, drive-through uses must meet with respect to the drive-through lane layout and design. The second is mini storage warehouse, specific use standards, again, standards that are specific to mini storage, and they have to meet that layout and design. And the third is amendment to the marijuana entries within the zoning code, all of which right now reference medical marijuana. Very simple kind of amendment to medical designation. And so I'll jump right in. And so the first one, dealing with drive-through lane standards. And so kind of shown up on the screen, and this is the same slide as presented last month. You know, drive-through lanes are permitted in certain zoning districts. Some of that depends on the type of drive-through use. You know, restaurants are a little more restrictive than, than everything else. And then there's a list of various standards, including a forty-foot setback from a street line, a twenty-foot setback from a property line, and a twenty-foot turn radius requirement. There are stacking space requirements based on the use. And then, you know, some, some language regarding order boxes if they're close to residential areas, and, and a front yard restriction. So as it kind of presented last month, there have been a number of variances over the years. So going back to two thousand and ten, there were four different variances presented to the Board of Adjustment and approved by that body. And dealing specifically with the property line setback for drive-through lanes. That's the twenty-foot setback from a neighboring property line. Okay? And then, you know, I think some of the reasons, you know, as, as this, that, that variances are, you know, one, being, being necessary as, as, you know, designers try to lay this out on the site. But drive-through lanes are becoming increasingly kind of built around the, or restaurants in particular, are being built around the drive-through lane. And so the older style of, of drive-through lane design, you know, where you have a restaurant and the drive-through lane is right up against the building with the parking lot kind of around the, the border of the site. It's very easy for this type of design to meet the standards, you know, with respect to setbacks from property lines. You're not right up against a property line. So this is the McDonald's on Missouri Boulevard. And then same thing over here, Popeyes on Missouri Boulevard, built not terribly long ago. Again, has, you know, has the design that, has that drive-through lane right up against the building. But increasingly, drive-through lanes are kind of being shoved to the outside of the site to separate that drive-through traffic from the, the other customer. You know, people are going to dine-in type of parking lot traffic. So this is a Chick-fil-A up in Columbia with the drive-through lane kind of on the boundary of the site. And so with it right up against the front property lines even of the site, it would not meet, you know, if that were built in Jefferson City, it would not meet our setback standards. And so that, that setback standard with the number of variances that have been proposed, you know, granted by the board is something that we think, you know, is, is maybe justifiable of a change. And then also, the drive-through lane radius is currently a twenty-foot radius. And so what that refers to is, for example, this little curve right here is what that's referring to. And its purpose is to make sure that the traffic flowing through a drive-through lane is not making extremely sharp turns. Now, twenty-foot radius is a pretty big radius. And it's, you know, it's almost invariably designers have to redesign their site to kind of match that. Whereas this particular one, this example up in Columbia, that's about a, that's probably a ten-foot radius curve. And so to flip back to the Popeyes site, that is probably, is, is a twenty-foot radius curve. Of course, it does a, a complete loop around the building, but just to try to give you a little bit of idea on, on the scale. And so the specific proposal, as discussed last month and presented to you this evening, is amend the zoning code by reducing that minimum setback from the property line from twenty feet down to five feet. That matches up with a normal driveline, driveway setback requirement that's applicable to commercial situations. And then also reduce that drive-through lane radius from twenty feet down to ten feet, kind of match up the Chick-fil-A example that I showed. So that's the first of three zone amendments. Does anyone have any questions on that one? Continue on to the next one regarding mini storage standards. Mini storages are a permitted use in industrial district, districts? And I'm referring to outdoor mini storage, where, where the, the customer, the person renting the unit has a standard kind of garage door where they, they access their unit from, from the outside, not indoor varieties, which are separated. But the outdoor uses are permitted use in the two industrial districts and require conditional use permit review by the Board of Adjustment in the, the C-two, the General Commercial Zoning District. In addition to that, they also have a fairly lengthy list of specific use standards. I'll try to touch on them very briefly. And one is a fencing or screening requirement. And the idea behind that is kind of dual-purpose, to screen the use from the view of the use. Mini warehouses, you know, mini storage warehouses are not necessarily the most attractive things. And then also partially as a security type of, of device. And then second is internal driveway widths. The requirement is actually thirty feet wide for a driveway going through a, a mini warehouse site. So that, you know, accessing both, you know, garage doors on both sides, or twenty-six if it happens to, to only be on one side. There's a parking space requirement for mini warehouses at the rate of two spaces for, for staff, and then one space for every two hundred units. And then there's also a restriction to the number of driveways that can access the, the neighboring street for a mini warehouse. And then the other two bullet points there on, on the screen are really not applicable to our discussion this evening, but there are standards regarding storage of vehicles and also, you know, things like you can't have a, you operate a commercial business out of, out of a mini warehouse. And so the, the issue, of course, is that it is very common for this type of use, mini warehouses, to go before the Board of Adjustment for variances of one sort or another. And so the Board of Adjustment specifically requested staff to, to look at the zoning code requirements for this use and, and see if changes need to be made. So this was actually something that was requested by the Board of Adjustment as they continue to hear variance cases for this use. And so in addition to, you know, the four different variance situations that are kind of listed up there on the screen, you know, it... Well, I'll just try to give some visual examples. There's a couple, I'll, I'll show a couple situations here in town. These are both very recent examples. One of them, I think, is under construction. The other, I think, is near, is, is soon to be under construction. But the first one up on the screen is on Hoover Road. That's off of West Main Street. Kind of by where Truman and Industrial Drive and Highway one seventy-nine intersect. That intersection is, you know, just off the screen to the bottom left here. But a site right here, and the site plan that was presented to the Board of Adjustment for variance requests is, is shown up on the screen. So I'll point out where those variances were. One of them was the width of the driveway going through the units. To narrow that down by several feet, one was a screening requirement variance in order to, you know, not have to fence in the, the small pieces of the site that are really, you know, not, you know, covered by the exterior of the buildings. And then the third variance, or fourth, or variance, the third variance is there are two driveway accesses onto Hoover Road. And then the fourth variance is actually the parking variance, they, you know, having to show parking spaces on the site. The Board of Adjustment approved all of the variances except the parking variance. You know, again, it's a code requirement and not necessarily a hardship for that specific, you know, issue that is being presented to them, kind of their feeling. And then a site out on East McCarty Street. And so this site, you can see the storage sheds here, again, a variance for the, the width of the driveways, and then also a variance on the, the fence screening requirement. This particular one happened to be right up against another mini warehouse use, existing one. And that shows an example of the, the neighboring one, which does not have a fence because it was constructed prior to the fence requirement being replaced. And so here's another example, just to try to give some visual, you know, some, some examples of what it looked like. You know, where there is a, a small fence kind of, you know, bordering the site, you know, up against Saint Mary's Boulevard. This is mini warehouse at Saint Mary's and Missouri Boulevard is just kind of off the, the screen here, kind of in the vicinity of Walron Supercenter. But the specific request that I present, present to you this evening is to remove the fencing and screening requirement entirely from, from the list of standards for this use and replace it with a requirement or an allowance that the Board of Adjustment can include a fencing or screening requirement when, when ruling on a conditional use permit. So the logic there is the, when these items are located in the commercial zoning districts, they're probably more likely to be either visible or close to other residential areas. And so screening can become very relevant, but not necessarily in every case. So give the Board of Adjustment some latitude on where to require that screening or not. And then whereas if they're in, located in industrial districts, which are typically located further away from, you know, from residential areas, and also, you know, not expect it kind of held the same standard in terms of visibility, you know, allow these uses to exist as they're, they're kind of industrial in character anyway. There would still be buffer yard standards in place in the event there happened to be one of these located next to a residential district. There's still buffer yard standards regarding placement of trees and even screening fences in some cases. So let that portion of the zoning code kind of regulate the screening when these things are close to, you know, incompatible uses. The second bullet point is to reduce that drive aisle width minimum. Again, most of the variances, if not all of them, I think, were variances from that requirement and sometimes other things. And so to reduce that down to twenty-four feet. Twenty-four feet is the standard drive aisle width for commercial situations anyway. And remove the parking space requirement. And understand, you know, in a, in a very, very large, you know, mini storage use with hundreds of units, parking in an office onsite might be a relevant thing. And there would still be a parking standard applied to an office use as a component of a mini warehouse. But most of the many, you know, mini storage uses in this town are really small and, and don't have onsite staff. And they don't really have a need for parking. And, you know, people are going to park wherever they can park. It's, you know, the, the whole thing is kind of a parking lot. And then the fourth item is to remove the restriction for only one driveway access per property street frontage. I'm not aware of any other zoning code uses that have that specific restriction on. And so having it just for this type of use seems a little odd. So those are the four items that are, are proposed to, to be amended within the zoning code for many, mini storage uses. Are there any questions on this item?
When it comes to buffer yard against using plants as a buffer for next to residential neighborhoods, is there a plant size minimal when it comes to that?
Um, yes, there, um, there are. And so that buffer yard standard, there, there's a, there's various options that the developer of the property can choose from in order to meet the buffer yard standard. And in, you know, kind of the typical, you know, heavy commercial or industrial use next to a single-family neighborhood, you're going to see not only a requirement for a solid screening fence, but also a row of trees. But there's other options that could be just an extremely wide area of open space. Kind of an unpopular option because that's, that's commercial real estate. So usually there's, you know, the buffer yard is being condensed within about a twenty-five-foot strip of property consisting of a six-foot tall solid screening fence and then a row of, of trees. So the various options, you know, include different options for the size of those trees. And I don't recall them specifically off the top of my head, but there are, there are some standards for those.
I've seen some buffer, uh, some trees used for buffering and they're like, you know, tiny.
Yes.
Sound like it's going to take twenty years for them to grow.
Yes, and I'm, I'm starting to become more vocal when presenting these items to the Planning and Zoning Commission that many types of, especially evergreen buffer yards do not, you know, do not necessarily pan out the way that, that they're sometimes envisioned. And, and, you know, as I speak to developers, I certainly encourage them, look at a solid screening fence because you know exactly what, what it's going to be, you know, going to consist of. Whereas a lot of the evergreen buffer yards, there are some that are, you know, have turned out very well in town, but yes, there are some where the trees do not grow well.
Well, you know, a lot of variables too. If they, say they grow for ten years and one dies, then your screen's gone.
That's the other thing. It is a...
Or it didn't get water or soils.
And so we do occasionally, you know, go out, especially on a, you know, complaint basis, where we're notified of such situations and we, you know, have to notify up the, you know, you need to maintain your landscaping. Many of those situations are in PUD plans, so built within a PUD plan. So some, some buffer yards are really the PUD plan that governs the size and arrangement of trees rather than the zoning code. Thank you. So the third proposed amendment is dealing with marijuana-related uses. Now with the passage of Amendment Three, which took effect early this year, there were a number of other City Code amendments that, that were presented by the Law Department directly to the City Council to bring our business licensing and criminal codes and things like that up, up to date with respect to Amendment Three. Uh, the one thing hanging on is amendments within the zoning code. So when marijuana uses were inserted into the zoning code, it was because medical marijuana had been passed and legalized within Missouri. And so all of the entries within the zoning code are dealing with medical marijuana uses. And so this particular amendment, we're basically remove, would strike the word "medical" and let all of the existing, you know, where these uses are permitted. And there are some specific use standards applicable to them, specifically a separation distance from churches and daycares. But everything that applied to the medical marijuana use would now apply, you know, to, to the, the recreational and comprehensive and micro-business uses as they're kind of defined within, within our licensing code. And, and so that's kind of a display showing what's on the books right now of the different types of uses, dispensaries, cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, testing facilities, and transportation facilities. So of course, the really, the only one that exists in Jefferson City is that dispensary use, the commercial use, where, you know, customers can go in and purchase the products. And those, those are permitted use in the C-two, the General Commercial Zoning District, and there are a couple in town. And so there is a one-line statement there at the bottom of this slide that Missouri state law does not provide for the ability to distinguish between the medical comprehensive micro-business uses at the low level with respect to land use regulations. So we don't really have a lot of latitude to try to separate those uses. So that's really the legal basis behind, you know, this amendment and why we have to do it. And so the specific proposal is to update the zoning code by removing the medical designation, doing a strike through at all locations. I also have a, a, a small change in reference. There's many references to Department of Health and Senior Services, I think it is. And we switch that over just to the state of Missouri. And then also an entry to make sure that it's clear that this applies, you know, the, the, the commercial portion applies to all of those uses, medical, comprehensive, recreational, and micro-business uses. There are draft council bills that are included in your packets. I apologize. I meant to say that upfront. And so that is the specific language that we would be proposing. It's kind of how we like to present it to you, is that is the council bill, is the draft version. That would be proceeding, proceeding on to the City Council after recommendation. We're looking for a single motion to approve the entire package of all three, unless there is any discussion or reason to change it right now. And the thing would, would proceed on to the City Council for introduction of public hearing at that bottom. Mr. Chair, it is a public hearing item, and so we do need to go through the public hearing process. I'm happy to answer any questions, any other questions prior to...
Okay. Anybody else, anybody else have any questions for Eric? Any questions for staff? We will... All right. We will now hear from persons who would like to present this case. Please come forward to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. I don't believe anybody's here for that. Okay. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this request? Is there anyone who would like to just speak on this request? Nobody? Seeing none, we will now close testimony. And then we will, like, will you be doing the...
Uh, yeah, I'll just... I'm happy to answer...
Your own name show here. You're like Paul.
Yeah, in terms of, you know, uh, you know, these, these are all technical edits, you know, so it's, you know, for the, for the two specific use standards, we're, we're dropping the requirements down a little. I hope I've laid out the justification for that. For the marijuana use, it's, it's in order to really bring our zoning code in line with state law allowances. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Seeing none, uh, someone like to make a motion? And we're doing this as a recommendation on Paul.
Yeah, we do have a recommended form of motion on the screen.
Motion to recommend approval of the proposed zoning code text amendments to the City Council.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Sorry, discussion. I always forget that one.
Yep, discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the two hundred, or twenty-nine hundred block of Route CC. And Courtney, you can begin this.
Okay, so this, this property is outlined in blue. And it is, you're in twenty-nine hundred block of Route CC. It is zone RS-two, Indian Family Residential, and it's currently vacant, but has a, has had a preliminary platte where we go through. And then his request is for now a final platte. And so adjacent to the North and C-two, and North and RS-two, Indian Family Residential, what they're being used to such is landscaping business and Indian Family Residential. To the east, a main thoroughfare feature there. It is sewn RU, rural, and then to Single Family Residential, and then Highway one seventy-nine is on that side. And to the south, zoning is unincorporated with the... The west is unincorporated with Indian Family Residential use as well. So again, here's the property. It's outlined in blue. And as stated before, it's already gone to a preliminary platte, but in addition, it did go through with a rezoning to transition the zoning from RU to RS-two. So now it's zoned, RS-two, as that's made by the City Council. And then also, you all approved a preliminary platte, and in addition, a variance which would allow two-hundred-foot variance from the required maximum eight-hundred-foot cul-de-sac length to allow the, the final platte. This was also at one hundred thousand. Here's that. So here's the final platte. And just going over a couple of the, the details, just in brief, as you all have already seen it. The name is Edward, the proposed name is Edward Bridge subdivision. And it asks opposing to construct a three-twelve Bobby Court. Sidewalk will be located on, first, again, twenty-six lots with three of them fronting along Route CC, and then the remainder four to twenty-six wrapping around that exposed three Bobby Court. And then lots two and five will be, or two and three are proposed to be the largest at over, little over sixteen thousand square feet. And then the smallest will be lot twenty-five, it's the small, with that being a little over, or sorry, no, the largest, the largest lots, they're over sixty-four thousand square feet, sorry. And then that smallest lot is over sixteen thousand square feet. The reason why I say that is because now that it's done, it's due to subject to all the dimensional and structural requirements. That includes having a minimum lot size, lot size width of, or just lot size, sorry, of ten thousand square feet. So it does meet that. And so there are three lots fronting along Route CC, rest rock around that, that street. There's going to be sidewalk proposed for the south side of Bobby Court, in addition, parking on that south side of Bobby's Court. There's no parking to the north. And utilities have been looked into, including streetlights, fire hydrants. And then also there is a track A towards the east side of the site that will, is proposed to have a stormwater detention basin with an all-weather access going there. to have a stormwater detention basin with an all-weather access going there and, and Bobby Court. And then additionally, the sanitary, there is a sanitary sewer main on, serving the subdivision to the south, but it would need to be tended to serve that proposed subdivision. And so the consultant, the applicant, has been working with the engineering division to go over infrastructural plans and, as well as sanitary sewer, all that, that sort of plan. And with that, those are the initial details.
Do any commissioners have any questions for Courtney? Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, we will now hear from persons who would like to present the case. Please come forward to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Glenn Strom, I'm from Missouri Professional Services, East McCarthy Street, representing Burke's Construction LLC at the property. We're approving the final plat of Edward's subdivision. As Courtney said a lot of this, I'm going to just repeat a heck of a lot of it. It's 22 and a half acres. So it's located just east of Route CC and Highway 179. Located just south of Green Horizon Garden Center. Midwood subdivision, even though it's not part of the city, it's just to the west of it across Route CC. And also Country Manor, State Section 1, and Meadowbrook State subdivisions are located south of it already. So there's a couple of subdivisions already in the area. Property's currently undeveloped, it's just a vacant wooded lot. You guys approved the zoning to RS2 back in June. County line is on the west and south property of it. And then the Highway 179 is on the east side. We are proposing 26 single-family resident lots, 23 along the new proposed Bobby Court Street, with the remaining three lots on the north side of the property fronting Route CC. The lots range in width between 100 and 165 street frontage. There's also a reserved track A, the southeast corner of the property, that will have a water quality detention basin to serve the stormwater from the newly developed Bobby Court Street. A four-foot sidewalk is proposed on the south side of Bobby Court along with streetlighting. New sewer line will run along the backside of the properties and connect the existing manhole off the southeast side of the property. The water main, electric, telephone, gas will run along the south side of Bobby Court and connect existing utility lines that went parallel to Route CC already. Structure phasing wise, the infrastructure will be constructed all at once, which includes completion of the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and other utility services, curb and gutter, paving the streets. Sidewalks will probably be constructed as units are constructed themselves, just works better that way. We don't need a traffic impact analysis because it's under 75 units, but we don't see any issues with traffic just because it's so close to Route CC, right? And Route CC is only a quarter mile away. Most part, that's it. Do you have any questions? Dave Brooks is here too, he's the owner of the property. Thanks for having me, guy.
Do we have any questions? Thanks, Glenn.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this request? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this request? We will now close testimony.
A may.
Am I going to add myself?
Oh, no.
Oh, wait.
Shane Wade's not here this evening, and so I was going to touch on just a few engineering items, try to emulate Shane. So there is a, a stormwater detention basin plant on a reserve tract, located right there. And so there would be a, a strip of land, property that would connect to the reserve tract, and that's where the, the basin would, would be constructed, located, and then turned over to the city. And so it would have access off the end of the cul-de-sac, an all-weather street, and so basically a grand road access to. Also Route CC is a, is a state highway, and so the connection and permitting of that, you know, is per MoDOT. It was described during the preliminary plat phase that those discussions with the state have already occurred, and that its, its location is proper. There are sewer line easements shown to connect to neighboring property now. The way that would work is the infrastructure plans, you know, would include construction of the sewer lines to, to serve the subdivision, but there are easements platted in a few directions, so I'll point out one right there, going up to the southern boundary of the property. And then also from a point right about there on that lot, continuing up to, again, the boundary to the property, where there wouldn't be sewer lines constructed, but the easements allow for future sewer line extensions should that need or, you know, the desire ever, ever occur. So obviously the developer's not going to build a sewer line to the neighboring property, but the option is there in the future, yes, the city is going to accept this infrastructure and have the ability for it to expand to neighboring property in the future. Those are the main things I kind of wanted to touch on from the engineering perspective. I believe Shane's reviewed the plans, I believe, or Shane has submitted technical comments, you know, on the plat document, returned that to the engineer, very minor things. And then also is finalizing review of the, the improvement plan, so the infrastructure improvement plans that would, would detail construction of the street, storm and sewer lines, and should be, you know, back to, to the engineering firm early next week. And so that should put you in a good, good position as it proceeds on to the City Council. Go ahead and go over the, the form of motion also. That is up there on the screen, there's two recommended conditions on the motion. Those are both standard conditions with the final subdivision plan. And that is to, to address those technical comments from city staff. And again, technical items that have already been provided to the consultant on the plat and should be forthcoming soon on the, the improvement plans. And then submittal of a finalized and signed plat prior to introduction to the City Council. And so we will not introduce the bill to the City Council without a signed plat to attach to that bill. And so assuming that's, that's received, then it would proceed on the timeline shown up on the screen, that is introduction to the City Council on December 4th, and then they'd be eligible for passage, the bill, on, on December 18th. It's not a public hearing item, so it's not a public hearing in front of the City Council, kind of a normal item.
Just one quick question. Where the sewer line, where you said the, the road for the detention, the water, water detention, right? Basin?
Oh, yeah, uh, stormwater detention basin.
So that sewer line then goes that direction too, right?
So, yeah, the sewer, the sewer comes from southeast of the site.
I see it on there.
So I think that some of those lines kind of go in that direction.
So it goes further past that, it's not like a pump station or anything like that, it goes down?
Okay, it's, it's gravity.
Gravity, all the way.
Okay.
You mean, um, what? Staff report?
Courtney?
Right, still? Are we, okay, I didn't know, because I didn't want to say, you're right here. So, I don't know.
We might be good.
That's fine.
It's not formally a public hearing item, but if we could go through the motions anyway, and see if there's anyone present that would like to talk on. Oh, I'm sorry, you've already done that.
Yeah, we already did that. Do any question, uh, do any commissioners have any questions for staff? Seeing none, will someone like to make a motion?
Move to recommend approval to the City Council, the requested final subdivision plat of Edward's Ridge subdivision with the following conditions, address the technical comments from city staff, and submit a finalized and signed plat prior to introduction to City Council.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And then this will be going on to the, to December 4th, correct?
December 4th introduction and December 18th.
Turn it over to Eric with staff updates on prior case, but he did not do his homework there.
But, but there was one, one project, the rezoning of 211 Commerce Drive, that was for relocation of the drug cleaners. And I'm not sure of the construction status of that project, but I know they were on a tight timeframe and were appreciative of rearrangement of the meeting date of the Planning and Zoning Commission. But that item was approved at the City Council level, the rezoning. And construction plans have been approved by, at the staff level. I think that's the only item I had to present on.
Then we'll also discuss the commission meetings, probably.
There's a question down there.
Oh, sorry.
So, up on the screen.
Do you have a question? You have a question?
I just wanted to, I wanted to add to, oh, this is that break time that we approved back in March, they're getting ready to open their doors very shortly.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
Up on the screen, and I think also present to you is the meeting calendar for 2024. All meeting dates fall on the normal second, Thursday of the month. And so we're not, not rearranging anything due to holidays or otherwise. Would you like to formally approve the calendar for you?
I move to approve the calendar.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll, I'll, sorry, say, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
So, uh, one, one item, I'll bring up just a little bit of history, Chris Jordan, former chair, would get upset if a meeting date fell on Valentine's Day. So we don't have that.
Very important name.
There's, there's one item, it's, it's not on the agenda, but it's informational, and so I'd like to go over it, over it with you. And so on the, the Campo, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a long-range train, transportation planning organization, that covers not only Jefferson City, but also, you know, the surrounding area, the MPO, the metropolitan area. And so I'm the manager of that, that particular division within the city. It's housed within the city, but, you know, the set covers areas outside the city. But anyway, we at Campo are in process of updating our metropolitan transportation. This is the transportation of the metropolitan. It's required every five years that it be updated. It covers a 20-year planning horizon. We're, we're basically doing a soft update this time around because we put a lot of effort, a lot of work into it five years ago, including hiring a consultant and doing some scenario planning, trying to forecast out using a computer model, growth within and outside the city to, to, you know, kind of model the transportation network and, and see where, where any weaknesses might occur. And so we believe that that information is still, still very relevant, and so not necessarily in need of a major update, so we're doing, doing this soft update. And so we, it was kind of presented and prepared as a 25-year plan five years ago, so now it is a 20-year plan, but we, we are, we are doing that update. So the, the long-range, you know, that metropolitan transportation plan, you know, really goes through a formal planning process for, for transportation planning in the metro area, assessing needs, setting goals, and dealing with all forms, you know, of, of transportation, not only vehicular traffic, but also pedestrian, and then the multimodal methods of, you know, air travel or rail, et cetera. So kind of shown up there on the screen. I'll show just a few slides here focused on some of the vehicular priorities as we've, are, are putting them together into the plan. So we're, we've already met with some stakeholders and done some preliminary work. So up on the screen is really the amended version of road and bridge priorities within the metro area, broken up into three different tiers, yellow, green, and blue, with the yellow ones being the, kind of the, the most impactful, the, the needs that are really at that regional level. And so it's things like the bridge across the Missouri River, the trial level, and the major intersections around town on four-lane highways. And so that's where the yellow dots are showing up on this map. And then below that is a tier two, and so, you know, things that are more, you know, more, you know, more often kind of on the city street network are, are below off of that, that, those four-lane highways. So, you know, kind of that second tier of needs spread across the area. And then finally, the, the third tier where needs that are still kind of supported or referenced by our, you know, member agencies, communities of public or otherwise, but not necessarily rising up to, you know, being, being highlighted heavily within the, the computer model and the transportation, the traffic models that were done five years ago. And so I just wanted to kind of show you that as a, as a piece. And we do have, have that map and also other, you know, the multimodal needs on our website. And so if anyone's interested to see kind of the full list or to review this in more detail, they can go to the, to Campo's website, which is, you know, within our Department of Plan and Protective Services on the city website, and, and click on the link for this plan and be able to find the document that is that draft illustrative list of needs. So also within the plan is what's called a major thoroughfare plan. And so, again, we're basically updating it from five years ago. And so shown up on the screen is basically the draft version of, of that. I don't recall if there's any changes that we've really identified from, from five years ago. But these are the major corridors, either existing corridors that are in need of improvement of some sort, either a capacity or, or safety improvement of some sort along a corridor length, or new corridors, new roads that are planned, major roads, you know, not, not local streets or anything like that. So some of the major roads that are shown up on the screen include an extension of Wildwood Drive down from Edgewood Drive going first to Rock Ridge Road, and then a second segment continuing along Route CC. It's an extension of Mission Drive from Highway 179 to kind of meet up with that interchange. And then also an extension of Shot Hill Woods Road heading out to Shot Hill Road, or Shot, Shot Road, sorry, on the county, so to kind of form an outer road to the highway and another link toward Walmart. And then an extension of Militia Drive from that interchange heading down to, I forget the name of the road there outside city limits. But those are some of the examples of thoroughfares that are shown, you know, on the major thoroughfare plan. So this is very relevant because it basically, it's almost a mirror image of this, this plan that was adopted within the Jefferson City Comprehensive Plan, laying out major thoroughfares and future road extensions, which is, you know, something that if a city is planning a future road extension, it's kind of a legal, also legal necessity to be identified within the city's comprehensive. And so, wanted to just present those couple items. Happy to answer any questions?
What is, uh, item 202 up there in Cedar City?
Oh, um, I think that's an entry for, actually for the ramps, and so it's technically a system expansion, although it might, it could possibly be considered an interchange improvement. I say the ramps because it's the, the highway interchange right by the winery, Somhill Winery, up there, only has entrance and exit ramps on one side of the bridge. And so the need that's being referenced there is to put those ramps in on the other side as well. And so I think that's, that's why it's yellow, showing it as a system expansion type of project.
Thanks. Tier one, and you may have said this, is tier one, tier two, two, three, tier one is like within a certain timeframe?
No, no, it is not. And I've presented, and it can get a little confusing, I've kind of glossed over it here for this meeting, but I've presented an, a different method of, of representing our priorities, I believe, to this body in the past also. A method that is MoDOT's method of unfunded needs. Where they use the words tiers also, and so we've thought of it, it's really hard to kind of differentiate that. But within that method, there is, is kind of timeline associated with those, those tiers. But what, what presenting here, the different tiers are really almost order of magnitude type of, of system, where the yellow, again, is, is regional impact, the green is, you know, things that were, were. The green is, you know, things that were, were showing up heavily on travel demand model type of analysis. And then the blue is the kind of other needs that we know are out there that have been, been expressed. Well, I, a simple way of presenting that.
I noticed the Clark Exit, Miller, and Dunkland, uh, I'm assuming that's a, when you say interchange, is that, that's the one up there? So it's Clark Avenue Interchange?
Uh, yes, so, a, uh, an interchange on, on a four-lane highway. And so, um, that is actually a, an item that, uh, does show up within that unfunded needs, uh, submittal to MoDOT, that, that Campo, they have a yearly process, and so with the, the most recent process included that project. So the, um, the solution there, or the plan, as it was kinda laid out, uh, within, uh, some highway planning, some, what's called an environmental impact statement, you know, from getting somewhat dated about 15 years ago, uh, showed a pair of roundabouts, you know, on that interchange. Uh, the close spacing of the outer road, it kinda creates a, a, uh, you know, some unusual kinda turning movements, and so replacing those with roundabouts is really what, uh, what the engineers have, have determined the solution there to be.
But didn't they, weren't they wanting to do that not too long? Roundabout at the Dunkland and, uh, Clark, which I don't know why they, like, I still don't know why they don't, didn't work through with that, because it needs it back.
And so, you're correct, and I'm.
Terrible.
And, uh, in the public works department, we'd probably be the better one to represent how that, that kind of, uh, proceeded. Uh, I believe it, you know, was, was an item that ultimately, uh, the city council decision to not proceed with that particular project, as they weigh costs and benefits and et cetera. Um, but it, I, I believe was kind of, um, you know, somewhat paired up with a string of three roundabouts, two at the inter, interchange there at the highway, and then a, a third one there at Dunkland, um, but, but ultimately did not, uh, did not proceed at all.
My recollection is that, is that some major state funding for part of that happened at that time.
Which was very disappointing, because that's such a, I drive through, I live on Moore. I drive through there all the time, and I see people struggling, they, they cross that. It's dangerous. I mean, really, it's like out of any place of death that I've seen, it's one of them. It's bad. It's not our discussion here, so.
But do we really think a roundabout will fix it?
Well, I think.
Because people in this town can't figure the whole roundabout.
I would love to have stop signs at every spot, because I live on that, that road in the hall. Yeah. It's dangerous.
It, it's a bad situation.
So I'm not saying a roundabout.
Thank you very much. So, there's a reason I'm presenting this, as I do have homework. So. Shameless love. So what do we need you? Well, we need your input. And then also, uh, we have, we have some public meetings scheduled, and so, uh, I would like to request, yeah, again, you're, you're, you're very, this body, all of you are very in tune with, you know, with, with development and, uh, you know, and community type of facilities and things like transportation. And so, you're very well positioned, you know, in order to provide some real solid feedback on things like this. So, uh, here is your opportunity, please take that survey. Uh, the more people to have, we have, the more statistically significant, so to speak, that need of, that need to try to, in an age of where it's very difficult to get public feedback, um, this is one of the most successful methods. It takes some time to, uh, to go through the survey and, uh, and provide some responses. And then also, we have a couple of public meetings, uh, scheduled, uh, two of them, one in Jefferson City and one in Holt Summit. We, um, we like to include a meeting across the river, as Holt Summit is a, a fairly populous community that is located within the Campo jurisdiction. So those dates are up on the screen, uh, December 5th, uh, for the meeting here at Jefferson City. Uh, it'll take place here, here in this building. I can't remember if Katrina Williams, the, uh, the planner on the Campo side that's really organizing all this, whether she is in this room or the room across the hall is scheduled. And then also, um, uh, meeting up in, in Holt Summit, um, on December 12th, I think at City Hall. Uh, with that, happy to answer any questions. I know I kinda glossed over it. The purpose is to make you aware of it, and if you're really interested in the content and providing feedback, um, the, the website and the meetings are probably the best route.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do we have a question?
What, what's going on with the electric scooter? I see it's on here, in your survey.
Um, the electric scooter?
You know, that's asking how often I ride it.
How often do you ride it, Bunny?
Nightly. But I mean, I know there's been a big discussion at city council, I'm just wondering if we're gonna get it to stay, or?
And, and I'm afraid I'm not entirely up to date on that.
Okay, that's fine, then, I don't, I just.
I don't think it's real popular, is it?
It, I, I believe there, there was some discussion about the, the maintenance of, of the system, that, that process.
Yeah, uh, they have, uh, Burt is, is working with the city. I know they, they, they put a local person here that's, uh, that's, uh, in charge of maintenance now, and they've reduced the number of scooters, and they've put some, uh, places where, where basically the scooters can't go. And anyway, I think the complaints have died down, and, uh, of course, it's getting to a point in, in the year where, where they'll be used less, but, uh, for right now, they're here, still here.
In regards to places where they can't go, what I hate is that they let you get like 100 yards in, and then you can't get back. You gotta carry the thing.
Well, there's first, uh, like on the.
Of course, you got thrown in reverse.
So it's first, uh, you use it down to like, I, I think, walking speed.
Okay, yeah.
That, yeah, you can walk it out, but you're right, I'm sure that's irritating.
Boy, bring us any questions. Okay. Happy Thanksgiving. I, uh, I declare this meeting adjourned.
There you go, there you go.
I, I, I think.